Tradition, I'd like to read our proud and prouds and events. We're ready to go, Dr. Ahm? Okay. And Ms. Ortiz, okay, great, okay. So this week, we welcome back more of our AMD and OHS students to our buildings. The Austin volleyball team defeated Carmel three to zero and advanced to the semifinals. A new little free speech opened at Gurlik Park. Please check out our budget website for the links to our presentation and the full budget document. Our budget vote and Board of Election, excuse me, takes place on Tuesday, May 18th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the Austin High School Large Gymnasium. Claremont students met with students in Mexico to, thanks to the One World. Congratulations to OHS student Kevin Hernandez, who will be speaking at the Westchester Coalition for Drug and Alcohol Free Youth Virtual Town Hall Meeting at the Underage Alcohol Use, on underage alcohol use. Congratulations to Andrea Nardella, who received the 2021 School Partnership Award from Pace University. Thank you to Ms. Nardella for enhancing the partnership between the Pace School of Education and Austin. AMD MBK, my brother's keeper students collaborated with the NYPDH and Chef Emily and learned how to make healthy nutritional snacks. Saturday Explore and Learn Registration is now open. Please view your OBLAS for details. Thank you to Senator Melnick and Assemblywoman Galiff for securing the foundation aid and state aid for Austin schools. We have support, please support Austin Matters Takeout Day on May 3rd, and I believe it Takeout Day was also on Monday or Tuesday with it, I think it was Monday. And thank you to all who ordered in advance. Vaccine Angels are here to help with appointments at 914-236-4567. Please view our OBLAS for additional information. And the Austin Matters and the PTA are continuing to look for new volunteers. Please see our website for more information to reach out to the leaders of Austin Matters and PTA. And ongoing COVID testing at Ovac every Monday, Tuesday, and Friday from 10:00 AM to 5:45 PM is continuing. And I'd like to welcome everybody again to our meeting. And we are now going to go into our agenda, our presentation. And I just want to remind everybody in the audience that if you have a question or a comment, we will give time for that after each presentation. And we will ask you to raise your digital hand. We'll bring you into the meeting, ask you to state your full name and your address. You'll feel free to, please feel free to share your camera and unmute your mic, and you'll have two for your question or comments. And if you have more questions or comments, you can always go on to the back of the digital line and so forth. Welcome, everybody, and I will pass it over to Dr. Sanchez.
All right, good evening, everybody. And it's actually with great pleasure that I introduce Megan Masajakam, our community school leader. No stranger to board meetings, where she's provided various updates on some of the great work that she and others alongside are doing. This is our formal time where she's going to give us an update on our community schools effort. And under the context of, you know, our efforts related to equity. So I'm going to turn it over to Megan and want to thank her in advance for not only her presentation, but everything that she's doing to help support our our family, staff, and students throughout the district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Megan.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? All right. So as you know, I am the proud community school leader for the Austin School District. And I am going to give you an overview tonight of the journey that has taken place this year. Next slide, please. So each summer, I take the opportunity to meet with and collaborate with district leaders to reflect and to revise the community school work, because that is something that we are always doing to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students and families and that our work aligns with the district goals. So you can see here, three buckets, then I'm going to, you know, share our goals with you, and then I'm going to provide you with some highlights around the three buckets. So our first is our work, we, you know, in our, with our community school work, we want to ensure the social, emotional well-being for all. And this is to, this is designed to ensure that all students and adults are healthy and ready to learn, that barriers are removed from learning, and that cultural specific needs are met. We are really aiming here to meet Maslow hierarchy of needs, as we, as I've shared, you know, before. We also, in this work, have the opportunity to design student success programs. And these are designed for our students to continue learning outside of our school day, to give them new exposure to new opportunities and to enrich their lives academically and socially. This includes after-school programming, enhancing our curriculum during the school day, and our Saturday Explore and Learn program, which you'll hear more about. And then lastly, we aim to promote adult connectedness and engagement. And this is designed for us, adults, to increase their parent parental involvement by promoting academic achievement to support adults and to help individuals reach their best potential based on their cultural needs and educational wants. Next slide, please. So here are some highlights around our social, emotional well-being for all. This year, I had the opportunity to be an active participant in our district's Social Emotional Committee. I worked alongside of Kim Mauricio and DeSelia Lopez and various educators and clinicians and board members. And for me, it really gave me the opportunity to hear directly from buildings, to brainstorm with them, to learn trends, and really find, to, you know, work together to find solutions and how we can support our students and families. As you all know, the most exciting, I think, thing that happened under, you know, this bucket is that we launched O Prime, which is our district's Community School Resource Hub, and something very unique, I think, you know, in Westchester. This hub provides resources for families, to send students, to support them in their educational journey. And you'll hear a little bit more about that. You know, in this work as well, I get to work collaboratively with all district administrators, clinicians, social workers, and educators to really meet the needs of our families. Oftentimes, my phone rings and, you know, there's a need that is shared with me, and we work together to find solutions. And I appreciate that and enjoy working with each of them. And finally, as you see here in this photo, we did something different this year and had some drive-through events. This is our holiday drive-through event where we were able to reach families in a different way at the high school and provided them with resources like books, pajamas, games, and that we wanted to have families, you know, encourage them to play games to both one another and various other items. Next slide, please. So here, you'll see an impact report from October, when we launched O Prime, to March. And these are all of the items that have been distributed out of O Prime. You know, some families have been replicated here, but, you know, we're working on, you know, diving deeper into the data to give you more of an analysis of that. But as you can see here, it's really about meeting the whole child and, you know, wraparound services for all families. I just want to give an example of, you know, how we support families. For today, I received a call from a building and they said, "We need 250 pens." And I happen to have 250 pens and something as small as that, where educators have reached out to me to say that they need headphones. Families have reached out about, you know, Wi-Fi access. And then obviously, we've been able to distribute various books that supported building initiatives like Reading Month and then individual personalized bundles for students. I will, I would like to share that the work that happens here at O Prime is really, the, our high school students are the hands behind the work. They are here weekly after school, sorting and organizing and packing with me. And it's what has naturally happened, it's become a little mentor program, I feel like, as well. I get to connect with kids, I get to hear about their week and hear, you know, what's happening. And it's just, it's wonderful to see they are the leaders of this work. They give me ideas and are really, like I said, the hands behind the work. Next slide, please. So student success programs. Something that happened this fall was our Learning Hub, which was really exciting. At the time, we were, students were virtual, and we were able to bring in some students to support them to ensure that they had access to their education. This year, we've had to pivot in many different ways. And although we didn't have after-school programming, we were able to enhance, you know, parent-teacher conferences and provide students with opportunities. Many of our partners provided us with online resources. And in addition, I've worked with various educators to enhance projects that they may have had in their building. An example of that is, one educator reached out to me and said, "I want to have a certain author." She said, "Can you get me the books?" And we were able to distribute one of the books to every student in their school, which is at Claremont School. I've also had the wonderful opportunity to coordinate and help coordinate and participate with local universities, you know, and various other leaders in the district. We've worked on, you know, evolving our tutoring programming, providing internship experiences. One example of that is Pace University. We had occupational therapists push into Park School and the high school. And then in addition, you've heard me speak to this before, I've been working on mentoring opportunities as well. We've had three Saturday Explore and Learn series. Again, we've had to pivot a little bit. And I am so grateful for our community partners who have joined us in these efforts and provided two and almost three that are ones coming up, opportunities for our students. They opened arms, you know, joined us in these efforts, and I'm so appreciative. And I would like to also share that, which I'm super excited about, because I think it's, you know, really showing that our Saturday Explore and Learn is something that our families want. We have a waiting list for the first time. That, so, you know, I feel that that's something, it's unfortunate, but, you know, we know that students want to participate, and I'm hoping that maybe we can open some additional classes to support the waiting list. And then lastly, I've been an active participating in summer planning in the, at the district level to see how I can help with our partners, enhance the programming that we have this summer. I know enrichment is really something that we're trying to push for, for our students, as well as Dr. Sanchez and I have worked with our community partners to really think about all students in Austin, and hopefully, Austin this summer is buzzing, and there are various opportunities in our community for all families to participate in. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the last highlight is from our adult connectedness and engagement. I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with Marcela Levin, our parent liaison. We are a team, the M&amp;M team. We have the opportunity to brainstorm with one another and really lend each other helping hands. Again, this summer, this year, in the summer, we had a parent resource center that was located at Park School, and we had to pivot, and it has become virtual, and I've supported Marcella with making that happen. But she has really been the leader in that work. This is a place where, you know, families can come and educate, be educated, connect with one another, learn, and have the opportunity to become empowered has really been our goals, you know, in our resource center. And again, our community partners support these efforts, as well as community members have taken on, you know, some of these efforts to engage our families as well. I've also had the opportunity to be a member of the Austin Basics Network and work with Carrie Ann and Nancy. And again, this is really about, you know, merging existing efforts that may, some of our partners may be doing already and bringing them into the basics. And just really being there as listening ears and see what other partners can join these efforts as well. Next slide, please. So next steps, again, like I said before, where I started is just really revise and reflect. You know, I continue to think about our systems and how we can infuse community schools as part of our culture. Things that I've been thinking about is creating videos. I've really worked closely with Allison Bacon. She's shifted my mindset on the importance of creating videos and possibly even commercials, and not only for our parents, but also for educators as well. I want to continue working on our communication and branding, you know, just to promote awareness of our resources and offerings. Some of the things we've been thinking about for maybe possibly this summer is either a meet and greet or, you know, working with faith-based organizations to help promote our work as well, and even additional, you know, community partners that are, that have a lot of presence, people present often. So continuing to think about that, as well as working with, I'm sorry. I've lost my train of thought, I'm sorry about that. And then also, sorry, I know what I was going to say. As we have our registrations, our pre-K and kindergarten, you know, showing, promoting O Prime, you know, as our families are entering the district to show the resources that we have, as well as sharing the community partners that work with us to support us along their educational journey. I wanted to, I wanted to continue to determine measuring outcomes using our data. We, you know, have a list of families that we serve, but really digging deeper into that, doing a deeper dive, and then, you know, determine gaps on who else we need to support. In addition, I wanted to continue to support our district goals and building projects. I see, you know, community schools as an additional arm for leaders to say, you know, "This is an idea I have, can you help make this happen, and what partners can join us as well?" Something I always try to do is increase our partnerships and organizations. And really, you know, this year, we have really joined efforts with local universities, and I think they are very powerful, and I hope to continue working with universities to support our work. And lastly, just thinking about expanding O Prime, hopefully having little satellites maybe within our buildings. Next slide, please. So, as you know, this work would not exist without our partners. And I just want to just share the journey, you know, this is our partner list in 2019 that I shared with you when I presented to you. Next slide, please. And this is our current list of community partners, which is not all of my work. I feel like this is a collective effort. This comes from all of our leaders who have possibly connected with someone. I just get the lucky opportunity to meet with them, you know, to share our goals and see if they are the right partners to work with us. But every partner you see here, I am so grateful for. They are, they have been so generous and really, again, supporting O Prime and all of our work. Every item that comes out of O Prime is because of our partners. They donate every single item that is here. Next slide, please. So I'll leave you with a quote, "Unity is strength. When there is teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved." And that is exactly how I feel. The list here of, I'm not going to name them all, you can see them. Every, I believe every single staff member in Austin helps lift the community school work. I would like to make a shout out to our Buildings and Grounds team, because they always help me no matter what. I can call them and say, "We have a pickup in Newburgh," and they will be there, you know, the next day, and gladly with smiles, unload the boxes here. They are so incredibly helpful. I know that sometimes when they see me, they probably want to hide, but I really appreciate them because they are the hands here, over here, as well. So in closing, I just want to say thank you to everyone here for this opportunity, and just leave you with, the community school strategy really serves as an equity strategy that supports the whole child. It's community-driven, it's shared leadership, we partner with families, we create a culture of connectedness, and my favorite, it promotes innovation. I get to be innovative every single day, which is really a wonderful thing to do. Thank you so much.
Wow. That was, that, yeah. If my colleagues would join me and just really big, big applause for this presentation. I sort of wrote down some of my own quotes here. "There's nothing we can't do, what more can we do?" has really been the theme. And especially through this COVID time, you know, watching the community come together and already, you know, Megan and Marcella and many others in the district already starting these efforts for our community schools. Just the foundation was there and is, was building up so beautifully and really helped us through this COVID time. And I know that we will see this through and the efforts and the ripple effects of this. And I could tell you personally, from being part of some of the food drives and other things, and I know my colleagues on the board and audience members that are here in the audience tonight and others, just the, really the coming together of all of these things to be able to help our community, community members in need and do it with dignity. And we were all, all of us needed something through this COVID. So Megan, this is an amazing presentation. I just kudos to you and your efforts in building this up and to all the folks that you work with and just echoing all your thank yous to everybody. And amazing, the partnership list, you know, just growing from 2019. That's a testament to really working with our community partners, giving them the opportunity to help and for us to receive help. So that's really big. So thank you for this presentation. And I'd like to open it up to my colleagues on the board. And then we'll open it up, you know, if anybody has anything from the, anything to say from the audience. So folks know how this goes, you can unmute your mic, my colleagues, and go ahead and share whatever you'd like to share. And I will call on trustee. Trustee Schnecker.
Well, just another, I never stop being impressed by these presentations and more and more of the work we take on. I mean, there's so much to kind of really talk about. And I think your ability to pivot in this past year with things like the Virtual Parent Academy and finding ways to connect people despite physical obstacles in the way are just such a testament to the work that you do and just finding a way to make things happen. And we certainly, I think, you know, we don't ever want to take that for granted and just want to really appreciate the efforts that you've done to make sure you're reaching and connecting with our kids and our families. It makes all the difference in the world, and especially in the past year. So thank you for all those efforts, appreciate the breadth of the update. There's a lot here, and certainly, don't be shy about, like, you're not shy with the, with the grounds crew, you know, our grounds, our grounds, building and grounds professionals. Please don't be shy with coming to us with ideas and resources needed, because I think we're just very receptive to kind of support in any way we can. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Schnecker. Trustee Gavith.
Yeah, I'll echo the same. I mean, Megan, between you and Marcella, it's such an impressive duo, as we've said many times over the years. And this year, your partner list is unbelievable. I think just the number of people willing to help and able to help in the community. I could even think of other partners who've done a tremendous amount in the community who may not be technically our partners, but are helping, you know, our families. I think one of the things you said that stuck with me was, I see one of the challenges in when you have so many of these organizations helping Austin families is trying to figure out, you know, if anyone's getting left between organizations or needs that aren't getting fulfilled by one that could be fulfilled by another. And I don't know that the, you know, school necessarily is the point person for all of this, but I think you said something about a deeper dive in terms of trying to figure out sort of that question of, are there other partners or things that, you know, we're missing? So I love that, that question, and I know you'll keep asking it. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Galiff. Anybody else? Trustee Crossley.
I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I've been watching O Prime grow over the past few years, and it's been a pleasure. You know where my heart is with the Saturday Academy workshops. They've just been fantastic. I've really enjoyed them. And then, you know, if anyone is watching this board meeting and they haven't taken a trip to O Prime, you're missing out. You absolutely need to go. Megan has done a wonderful job of setting up and warm, welcoming, and very helpful resource center for every single parent and family in our district. And this is really what true community-based schools mean. And I know that we say that this is important, and of course, it is important and it is impactful in these wraparound services that help elevate families in our district so that they feel as though they are able to have some amount of burdens relieved so that they can focus on connecting to our schools and connecting children to our schools is so important. But it translates all the way to Albany. I recall having a conversation with Senator Harkam about how unfair it was in the past that Austin was being short-changed with funding. And he said, "Well, can't you work with some community organizations to kind of fill the gap?" And I really was able to school him, pardon the pun, on our community-based school model as it exists and everything that we are doing in order to bring these services to our families. And he was speechless after I went through the list, and it's because of initiatives like this. And this kind of really intentional, dedicated, relentless, because it truly is relentless. I've gone and picked up, you know, computer exchanges from you and hotspots from you at all hours and over the summer, and you are doing such a fantastic job on this. So keep it up, it's only going to continue to grow. I know we've been talking on the SEL Committee about ways to really promote this. So I was happy to see that you included some of that in your presentation, because I think you were saying that there was staff in the buildings that knew that families could really benefit from this, but they weren't even aware that it existed. So I'm really hoping that that continues and carries on so that every single family will truly be aware of this, because it's really step one in connecting them to our district. And thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Crossley, me and my other colleagues, before we go to the audience.
Yeah, just a quick thank you to Megan and all that have helped you along this journey. Definitely have remained dedicated to building this to what we see today. And I'm pretty sure, as you stated, you're going to keep going. I really do appreciate the fact that, you know, as you stated earlier, the theory behind Maslow's hierarchy of needs is driving this work because that is integral to, you know, you know, everyone's needs have to be met in order for anything else to actually flourish out of that. So that's a really good foundation to work from. And I'm also, you know, I like to see how you're considering how all the different initiatives happening in the school impact your work and you, you know, chiming in and hopping in and just getting different perspectives from different committees, you know, shows that you're really trying to build not, you know, a quality foundation and hub for all, you know, families to benefit from. So I definitely appreciate all those, you know, small details that, you know, often go unseen, that you're definitely implementing into the work. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Baka. All right. I will, let's see, we have an audi, are we okay to go to the audience? Okay. Please bring in the first audience member. For the audience out there, it takes a second. Okay, please feel free to unmute your mic, share your camera if you'd like. Please state your full name and address, and you'll have two minutes for your question or comment. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, this is Jess Zachurelli, Locust.
This is Jess Zacharelli, Locust Road. I just wanted to thank Ms. Master Giacomo for her presentation and also for her steadfast dedication to and commitment to our community. I've had the privilege of working directly with her when I co-chaired the action committee with her. And it's really amazing to see her evolution and also the evolution of O Prime take place. I really feel like it's a lot of the work, meeting a lot of the needs that we saw on the action committee and taking it to the next level and kind of broadening it and making it a more consistent effort. And one of the things that I love about Ms. Master Giacomo's vision is that there is really something for everyone. You know, it's not just for a certain type of student or a certain community member. There is something for everyone. I have been a recipient of O Prime as well as a donor. And it's just a beautiful hub that has really, I think, helped to bring the community together in a more, a broader way. And I love all of the opportunities, you know, just that she has done in seeking out community partnerships. We have the app, we talk every so often and connect and collaborate when we can. And, and it's just Megan's always working on a new angle and a new avenue to find another additional resource, something that she hasn't thought of. And I'm just incredibly impressed and I'm so grateful that she is, you know, such a leader in this district. And I hope she stays for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zacharelli. All right. Seeing that we have no more audience questions on this particular topic, on this not particular, this amazing topic. And again, just thank you for, for your time tonight and for keeping up with, with everything and, and especially in these times and how much it really matters to our community and to our students and families. I will let Dr. Sanchez say a few things before we let you go and then we'll move into the next topic. Go ahead, Dr. Sanchez.
I just want to thank Megan for, for all her efforts, everything that the board has said. And it's such as, you know, O Prime, our community school efforts is at the heart of a lot of what we do to help support our families and enrich the lives of our students and make sure that, you know, basic needs are met. So she is a champion. She really is. She's relentless. All these words have been said throughout and I echo and thankful for her partnership. She's, it's not uncommon for her to get like three or four, maybe five or six text messages from me in a day with different ideas. So she makes them happen. I just have to say it. So just very thankful for tonight's presentation and for the partnership and her leadership across the district.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Feel free to contact me if you have any questions. And like Ms. Crossley said, you're welcome to come check out O Prime anytime you can come stop by.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now we are going to move into our continued budget discussions. So we're just going to transition. Thank you, Megan. And I will pass it back over to Dr. Sanchez.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. And as Board President Lisa Rudley mentioned, we're going to just, because we are going to review the superintendent's proposed budget and later on this evening, we'll ask that the board consider adopting it. There have been some changes and I'll speak to them as we go along to highlight for our community and those here in attendance, of course, as well. So I'm going to share my screen. And. Okay. So as I noted before, this is the superintendent's proposed budget. Tonight, we're going to be asking the Board of Education to consider adopting it, which in turn would be the, the budget that our community would consider voting on, on May 18th. So as always, I've shared this on every presentation related to the budget and it's worth repeating that our budget throughout this process is focused on the children we serve, which is our why. All 5,100 students and thinking very carefully about how our system adopts or adapts to meet the various needs that we've seen, whether it's in the midst of a pandemic or based on interest in other things that we notice or other needs that we notice of every individual child. These are prides throughout our district and it's worth highlighting because these don't happen without the great students, staff, and of course, the resources that our, our budget provides. The priorities that we set this year and have been the theme throughout included ensuring that our programs support the needs of all students, addressing class highs pre-K through 12, supporting professional learning for all staff and making sure that the, the learning is relevant for them as they too think of ways to meet the needs of our students, seeking to expand extended learning, whether that's after schools and Saturdays, addressing various facility needs. The social emotional needs of our students are considered throughout this budget process. Continue to think about our new long-range plan that we anticipate presenting to our board in May. And of course, throughout this process, ensuring that whatever we develop is fiscally responsible. Considerations that have been made is the impact of the pandemic. Thinking about the enrollment and the trends that we have via our demographer. Health and safety needs of our students have been, always been at the forefront, but even elevated more so in light of COVID. Staffing needs, school funding, the state and federal dollars that we might receive and resources. Instruction and delivery models will, we provide as well as programming to address lost time that we've had with our students. What you see before you is the proposed class size in red are just some changes that we made as of our last presentation. We anticipate overall a decrease in the projected enrollment or staffing by one student, one elementary teacher. So we go from 112 to 111. But all this is very much aligned with our class size policy throughout the district that the Board of Education has adopted. Some other additions related to school monitors, world language, music teacher at AMD, and occupational therapists, more so all these to address, again, class size needs, enrollment needs, as well as programmatic needs of our students. More recently, we added a third grade teacher, a school psychologist, a reading support teacher, dance, E and L teacher, additional clubs at the high school, the school monitor, and some additional teaching assistant hours across the district. When we think about our facilities, these are some of the items that we're seeking to address. First of all, is finishing the remodeling of our OHS library, doing important site work at AMD related to the flagpole or sidewalk curves, lighting and the whole driveway entrance leading up to the building. Roosevelt ventilation in the gymnasium, heating ventilation at various districts, various buildings across the district and renovations of bathrooms at Roosevelt School. Also included in here is recommended purchase of the church adjacent to OHS, which is on M Wilton Presbyterian Church. This project, when we've shared in various settings, helps to improve the learning environment or we, we anticipated improving the learning environment for all OHS students and staff, provide additional parking, provide additional classroom space that is necessary for, to address the enrollment that we have currently and programmatic needs. And we do not anticipate this having any tax impact in, as it relates to the purchase. These are just some interior renderings. And these are just, just to give you a sense of how space could be used. And this in particular, when we talk about the purchase alone, excuse me, speaks to just how dense our buildings are and the square foot per student. You can see also that as we project moving forward to 2020, 2030, that the overall square footage per student doesn't increase so significantly, but it does help in terms of providing us some additional space in our buildings. And when you, you look at it comparatively to other districts, we're very much actually still on the lower end as it relates to overall square footage per student. And it also speaks to the fact that should we purchase the church, it would not have, it wouldn't be an overbuild in any way. In terms of state aid, this was shared by our business official, Alita Zuber. We did see increases in state aid as relates to foundation aid. And we have some discussions to still have with our community and our board and our administrative team and our educators across the district of how we would use the allocated federal funds to help support student needs and various needs across the district. There have been some changes to the budget. Right now, we're exploring, there's some, there's a need for to, for additional time to look at the renovation portion of this project related to the church. So as such, you'll see a change from the last time we had shared the budget with the, the community, more specifically, the budget amount. The tax levy increase still stays at a 0%. The budget amount is $139.8 million. And the appropriated fund balance at this point in time is 3.8, 3.6 million dollars. And again, there's this, there's a change from the last time as we think about just needing some additional time as it relates to using our reserves, in this case, our, our capital reserves to address renovations of the, the church that we would hope to purchase. And these are just items that I, you know, I want to reiterate. Budget includes extended learning programs, a real focus on personalizations, class size, clinical support. And as I noted before, it supports, it supports our long-range plan pillars. So here we are in terms of budget dates. We anticipate having various dialogue to educate our community throughout. However, tonight, we're asking that the board consider adopting the proposed budget. We have a mandatory budget hearing on May 11th and the budget vote will take place on May 18th. And the vote takes place from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the Austin High School Gymnasium. And I just want to thank everyone for their support along the way. And I'll stop sharing my screen.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Just want to open it up to my colleagues on the board for any questions or comments. And then we'll take audience questions. And if you're in the audience, please raise your digital hand. And when we get to that portion, after my colleagues on the board have some time to dialogue, we will call on each one in order and you'll have two minutes with your comment or question. Okay. Maybe it's a good sign, Dr. Sanchez. We've, we've just discussed the budget a lot and I, I just want to comment on the tax levy slide. We don't need to have the word increase anymore because it's zero. So there's no increase and we should basically say zero, no increase. So maybe add the word increase. So thank you for. Yep, for the tax levy. All right. And again, thank you to everybody, to Ms. Zuber, Dr. Sanchez and to the administration and to everybody that puts so much time and effort into what goes into a budget. I think it, it starts, it's literally year round, what goes into the budget and making sure that we provide a best quality education for our students. And I really appreciate with the late notice of the state aid numbers and also finding out good news as well as the federal dollars coming in. We know there's a lot that goes into it. So we really appreciate all the efforts that you and your team have done, Dr. Sanchez. And I know that everybody here in the community really appreciates that we were able to be at a zero, no increase in the tax levy this year. And I'd like to open it up to anybody else before we go to the audience. And we always like to give an opportunity, you know, especially today as we're voting to adopt the budget for our audience to ask any questions that they have for continued dialogue. So with that. All right, seeing that my colleagues don't have any comments or questions at this point. Ms. Ortiz, please bring in our first audience member. Thank you. Okay. Please unmute your mic. Feel free to share your camera and state your name and your full name and your address and you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi, this is Beth Sniffin at Three Stormy Town Road in Austining. I have three questions. One, is the church acquisition part of the budget? Or is it a separate vote? I would like to have a corridor added to the, to the building of the church, it, it, between the church and the high school. I think that's really important, especially during cold days. And I think that I know a lot of adolescents, once they exit the building, they exit the building. They don't always like to go back into another school building. They might like to go to Lucy's or to a car. So a corridor is always a safe path that they will go to their next class. And I wanted to know with the budget, I saw that there is a counselor being added, but I wanted to know what other mental health things that you are doing for the budget. That's it.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak to the, the budget vote and the, the church? You're muted. Oh, go ahead, a little louder.
The purchase of the church is in the budget, but there is still a separate resolution to get a vote or approval to purchase the church.
Sorry, Alita, could you just speak up a little bit? It was a little hard to hear you. Thank you.
The purchase of the church is in the budget. The cost of the purchase of the church is in the budget, but there still has to be a separate resolution for the voters to approve to purchase the church.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll speak to the corridor. We're still working through the plans and it's come up in discussions. It's not the original site work or the, the demo that we provided to you and to the rest of the community, but we, we understand it's come up in various forums. So I can't say that definitively it's there just yet, but my point in bringing this up is that it's been brought up before. And obviously we have to cost it out and funding is, is an aspect of this to consider in this as well. And I would say that part of it too, we may even have to consider a phase in aspect to this, but we're still discussing that with our architects at this point. And as it relates to, yes, there's a school psychologist that's been added to the budget. I would say a lot of this in, in general, while they may not be, you know, clinicians, although we've had it. Recall that last year we added two, uh, school psychologists to the budget. We added a counselor last year to the budget. But this does speak to reducing class size as well, which are really critical. And also connecting our kids to school, whether it's in the form of additional clubs or others. So, and the, the last piece I would say is that it's also a consideration as we think about utilization of our federal funds and how we might be able to support the social emotional needs of our students as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Sniffin. All right. Next audience member. Okay. Please unmute your mic. Feel free to share your camera and state your full name and address and you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Christine Mangemelli. I live at Cortland Place and I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you. I think the, the taxpayers and the compute, and the community members are so fortunate to have a 0% increase and also still be able to make capital improvements and add programming at a time when we and add programming at a time when we need to add programming. And I, it's been said at other meetings, but I want to say it now as well about the foundation aid funding efforts that have come from our entire community. I'm so thankful for them, and I want to thank everybody here for that. And just express my support for this, this budget and the purchase of the church as well. I think it's just an amazing opportunity that happens to be coming at the perfect time. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Great. And I don't see any more audience members. Actually, I think I do. Okay. Bringing in the next audience member. Oh, sorry. I think they, oh. Okay, we do have, sorry, trying to keep up with everybody digitally raising their hand, bringing their hand down. Okay, welcome, Ms. Vicaro. Please state your name and unmute your mic and go ahead.
Hi, everyone. It's Vanessa Vicaro, President of the Austin Teachers Association. I would like to thank Dr. Sanchez, Ms. Zuber, and the board for your hard work on the budget this year. The Austin Teachers Association is in support of the proposed budget. We were very pleased to see the additional teaching positions that were added. And we are planning on doing our usual events this year to help spread the word about the vote. We will be doing phone banking, and we are looking into some virtual options for the student vote. So again, I want to thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vicaro, for your comments and for supporting, for the Teachers Association supporting the budget. The adopted, soon to be voted on adopted budget. Okay, next audience member, please unmute your mic. Please feel free to share your camera, state your full name and your address, and you'll have two minutes for your comments or questions. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Myrna Forni. I live on Croton Dam Road. And I have a question about the church acquisition and one other thing. The vote, the numbers that are included in the, in the budget, we've been shown renderings of potential uses of the building. Are we voting that on those drawings that are being shown that that is definitely what it is? I'm curious, because you mentioned that it's a phased-in aspect. Are you, does that mean that there's a chance that we're voting on a project and it's not in its entirety? And then my other question goes to use of the building. If there's not a corridor between the two buildings, is it anticipated that between classes children will exit the building and go to the other building back and forth? Because I'm, I'm, I will reiterate what I've said before and what Ms. Sniffin said. I'm, I'm more concerned about the use of the building and the ability for children who don't carry coats and backpacks and everything around to exit and enter in the, in the amount of time that it would take the five minutes or seven minutes that they have between classes and in the weather that we have in varying states of rain and snow. It seems to be, I, I'm curious, is the phased-in aspect that we are, the, the amount's going to go up if there's a corridor added? And then my other question that has nothing to do with the church acquisition is how long are we, are we eligible to receive the federal funds? Over what period of time would that, will, will those funds be made available to the district?
Will you want to speak to the funds and then I'll speak to the church?
The federal funds will be made available over a three-year period.
Portions of that, right? So the first set is
First set is in September 2023, and the second set, which is the American Rescue Plan, is September 2024.
Yeah, and so the, the question around this church and the renderings to illustrate how the space could be used, we see it predominantly being used for STEM purposes, science, technology, engineering, and math, but including, we want to make sure that we also include the arts, so a STEAM aspect to it. I wouldn't say that they're final just yet, but they illustrate how the space could be used. We do anticipate adding a second floor at this time, so that's, that's inclusive in the budget. What's not in there at this point is a corridor, although that's been brought up and for obvious reasons, for the reasons you've proposed, and also for the reasons that Ms. Sniffin mentioned. And actually, in speaking to our students, they've also noted that as well. It's not included, you know, in terms of the, the budget that we've allocated right now for renovations. So when I say phased is that we, you know, purchasing the, it's going to take us at least two years to renovate this entire space. So we may need to consider purchasing, renovating, and then potentially adding the, you know, corridor. But I'm not prepared at this time to say yay or nay to that, to until we can study it a little bit further.
So at this time, we're voting on a building with no corridor and, and a second, and no second floor or
No, it's inclusive of a second floor and, and the utilization of, for, for classroom spaces. It does not, you're not voting for a corridor right now. It's not included in the, in the plans at this point.
Thank you.
It's horny. All right. Do we have any more audience members? No? Okay. All right, any, any final thoughts before we move on? Okay. Thank you. This ends the section of continued budget discussions. And now we'll be moving into the business of the board and I, just give me one second, just bringing up the agenda. Okay. I'd like to take a motion to move up and vote on Resolution 6.5. So moved.
Second.
Okay, Resolution 6.5, Resolution Regarding SECRA Negative Declaration Capital Improvement Plans Districtwide. Any comments or questions?
I think we, is there, are we talking about an amendment to this resolution?
The, the, the amendment is already adjusted in the resolution. And we will, and I will share in comments as we go into the next part of the, the meeting. So the resolution has no reference right now to the purchase or renovation of the churches, and I will explain that in our next resolution vote.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Um. I would like to take a motion to table Resolutions 4.1, 4.3, and 4.4.
So moved. Second.
Okay, and I just want to make, to clarify for the community and for the board that we are tabling these resolutions as they pertain to the purchase of the church and renovations simply for clarification purposes in terms of procedurally how placing these items on the ballot. So we just need a little more time for clarification. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I'd like to take a motion to vote on Resolution 4.2.
So moved. Second.
4.2, Resolution to Adopt the Proposed 2021-2022 Austin Union Free School District Budget. Any questions, any comments, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I have a question about that. Do we have to do a, like a roll call? So everybody has to say aye separately, like we did last year for the roll call vote?
We don't. We don't necessarily have to, but if you would like to move that we do a roll call, please put a motion on the floor.
No.
It looks like it's a, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you for clarifying that, and it looks like we've all unanimously voted in favor of adopting the 2021-2022 budget. Okay, all right, thank you. And okay, I'd like to take a motion to vote on Resolutions 4.5 through 4.18.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Resolution 4.5, Resolution to Appoint Additional Consultants for the 2020-2021 School Year. 4.6, Resolution to Approve an Agreement with Iona College. 4.7, Resolution Regarding Medical Examination for an Employee. 4.8, Resolution to Approve an Agreement with the Austin Teachers Association and Employee Number 03020. 4.9, Resolution to Set the Hourly Rate for Officials Acting at the Special District Meeting. 4.10, Resolution Designating the Officials to Act at the Special District Meeting. 4.11, Resolution Regarding the Election of the Putnam Westchester BOCES Board Members. And I just want to take a moment to read the names of the candidates and the names. There are two individuals that have been nominated as candidates to fill the two vacancies on the Board of Cooperative BOCES Educational Services. Will, the two, for the two vacancies, the two candidates are as follows. Kathryn Lilburne from Garrison, New York, and Michael Simkins from Peekskill, New York. Okay, and Resolution 4.12, Resolution Regarding the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES Proposed 2021-2022 School Year Budget. Resolution 4.13 is a resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting executive session of March 1st, 2021. 4.14, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Saturday Budget Workshop of March 6th, 2021. 4.15, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting Executive Session of March 10th, 2021. 4.16, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting Executive Session of March 18th, 2021. And 4.17, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Regular Meeting Executive Session of March 24th, 2021. And 4.18, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting of March 29th, 2021. Any discussions?
I just had a question. Could we just get a little clarification on the resolution for the agreement, what is it, 4.6, I think for the agreement with Iona College? Can we just get a little description as to what that is?
Yeah, hold on a moment, Frank. I'll take a look at it real quick.
And while Dr. Sanchez is doing that, I'll say we have, we're approving all the minutes of all the meetings and executive sessions. We've had a lot of meetings in the last several months, unusual year.
Okay. Frank, this is a, and for the board and for our community, this is a, we've been engaging in various discussions with with Iona College on a variety of partnerships from, in this case, it's specific to their nursing department. In essence, it's, it's an agreement around their nurse interns. They're going to be helping, they're going to be working with our nurses to, in, in the nurse's office, providing additional support, but also gaining clinical experiences. That's the, sort of the, you know, three or four sentences related to that. And you'll probably see more similar agreements with other departments at Iona as we continue to enhance our relationship with them.
And just for clarification, the nurses will be treating the students, right? And, and the interns will be doing more of an observation and supportive role?
Yeah, yeah, they're not going to be treating the students. So just, I would say it's very, you know, they're going to be helping with some temperature checks in the beginning of the morning. They'll be doing some, you know, I would say some clerical support within the context of the nurse's office. But they're not, you know, providing the main services that our nurses provide within the context of our schools, which isn't uncommon. We've had nurse interns in the past too, and various other, from other, from PACE and other universities.
Okay. Thank you for the clarifications. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Thank you, Trustee Schnecker, for your question. All right, so the motion is on the floor for those resolutions. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I'd like to take a motion to vote on Resolution 5.1.
So moved. Second.
5.1, Resolution to Approve Recommended Placements. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, I'd like to take a motion to vote on Resolution 6.1 through 6.4 and Resolution 6.6.
So moved.
Second.
6.1, Resolution to Approve the February 2021 and March 2021 Treasurers Reports. 6.2, Resolution to Approve the February 2021 and March 2021 Budget and Revenue Reports. 6.3, Resolution to Approve the Quarterly Student Fund Treasurer's Report for October to December 2020. 6.4, Resolution Regarding Award of Bid Window Replacement for Brookside School and Claremont School. And 6.6, Resolution Regarding Interfund Transfers. Any discussions? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I'd like to take a motion to vote on Resolution 7.1 through 7.15.
So moved. Second.
7.1, Resolution Regarding Recending, Rescinding Support Staff Resignations. 7.2, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Resignations. 7.3, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Requests for Leave of Absence. 7.4, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments. 7.5, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Appointments. 7.6, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments. 7.7, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments Before and After School Program. 7.8, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.9, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.10, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments Summer School Program. 7.11, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Appointments Summer School Program. 7.12, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments Summer School Program. 7.13, Resolution Regarding Per diem Substitute Appointments. 7.14, Resolution Regarding APPR Accountability. And 7.15, Resolution Regarding Volunteer Appointments. Any discussion? As always, I'd like to thank our volunteers. As I say, it really helps our schools and really appreciate that, all their work in volunteering. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And now we are moving into audience And now we are moving into audience recognition. Um, so any audience members have any comments about anything that they um didn't get to ask earlier? Doesn't have to be on the agenda item, uh, uh, on the agenda. Trustee Cross.
I, Alita, I think you're unmuted. I just wanted to let you know.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to ask the audience if they have any questions or comments and anything you want to bring up. Please feel free to raise your digital hand and uh we'll bring you into the meeting. Or into the. The panel. Okay, seeing that there are no questions from the audience. Um, I'd like to move into our Board Committee Liaison Reports and Board Dialogue portion of our meeting. And uh, here's an opportunity for us to dialogue as a board. For anything else that committee reports or anything else that's going on. Please feel free to unmute your mics. Join me in any dialogue tonight? I know it's been a long night. Trustee Galif?
Yeah, um, just a, a quick comment. I know we're not talking about water tonight and hope we don't talk about water tonight, but um. There was the question of, do we talk about it again during a? Eight AM early meeting, um, you know, which historically has been like a five minute, we get together and. Well, we know there's not much discussion. Um, I don't know if that, there's enough green light from everyone who's, you know, saw the draft. The draft seems to be what we discussed last time. In terms of a twelve-month uh period. Um, I know we're, we're waiting on attorney language, but it just seemed like if, if we're, we have the green light. That everyone's was good pending it, pending obviously the attorney language. That the eight AM seems to make sense, but if we think, you know, if anyone thinks we need more discussion. Again, obviously the, the attorney thing could change the whole thing, but um. It, it seemed like sticking with a more traditional night meeting made sense, if, if we're going to get into, you know, more extensive dialogue.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we were just looking for a time that we could um. Discuss the resolution, um, the water exemption resolution. And we have not heard from our attorneys yet and um. I think um fair enough if, if for a board, um, we can pick out a night next week um to talk about it. I, I don't think it's going to be a five-minute meeting, whether it's at eight o'clock in the morning or eight a, uh, eight PM or seven thirty. I, I have some more questions around the proposed language, but it has not been reviewed by our attorneys yet, so I really can't make a determination. So if, I think our district clerk, Illy, will be, um, Ms. Ortiz will be pulling the board to see what uh evening or. Evening nights would work for us to discuss it again. Once, that's, that's if it's already been reviewed by our attorneys, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with doing it in the evening.
Okay, that just seems like, right, we want to um, be efficient, yeah, so if people have questions, get them in. So I don't know that anyone else will be there with us to answer the questions.
Yeah, but, okay, yeah, and fair enough. And I feel like any questions that we have, you know, except if it's procedural, we, we need to have them out in the public. So, you know, the dialogue around it, if there's any more questions that come up. Other than, I don't, for me, I don't anticipate having any more questions, but I don't know if my colleagues might, so.
Right, I'm not saying we need to answer, I just, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think we have the village there. I could be wrong, but I don't think the village is there and. Attorneys are there, so if people have questions, they just send in the questions so Ray and Alita can get answers. For the meeting, I'm at, take, you know, then, then we can discuss at the meeting, but at least we have the answers. If, again, I, if, if people have questions.
Okay, yep.
I think it's tough to answer the questions question until we get our attorney review. I, I think based on, you know, that, then basically we may need to, uh, there may be more questions, but. Let's, I guess we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
I will say, we've definitely talked about this water resolution a great deal and I appreciate everybody's uh. Conversation and discussion and the community's discussion around it. It's, it's, it's complex and it requires a, a great deal of time. And discussion. From my point of view, it has a lot of different layers to it and um. I just really appreciate the board dialogue that we're having about it and the uh, you know, um. And it, it's always good that we have the village that's able to come and answer. Any questions and any follow-up questions at our board meetings and we just have to be uh. Ms. Ortiz, I believe they have, their board meetings are on Wednesdays, so I don't know if they have, we'll just have to be conscious of that. And I know you are, so thank you for that.
And just that, we also need to get the date from the assessor, I think, too, right? Which, though we have that on the list to figure that out, to find out the listing. I know we're going into May first deadline, we're trying to move ahead of that, but really, depending on the council's questions and the answers there. Just trying to get a sense of what their, what their real deadline is.
Yeah, do we have the answer? We're working on that.
Last time I spoke to him was May first, um, but I'll confirm another time. I, I think actually today is when I had a conversation with Karen.
Okay. All right. Any more board dialogue? I know we have a policy committee coming up, meeting, policy committee meeting coming up. Um, but I don't have anything to report out on any. Committees. We have meetings just about every week, so I think we're getting the opportunity to report out on that. Anybody else? Um, trustee Spring?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly say, OU FSD was heavily represented in the town-wide cleanup this last Sunday. Uh, over a hundred students from OU FSD took part cleaning up litter from the town. We had a hundred fifty volunteers and two-thirds were students. Uh, trustee Crossing as well was there, so thank you, uh, OU FSD for taking pride in the community.
We're in the middle of Earth Week, right?
Yes.
Middle of Earth Week. Okay, thank you. All right, let's see. There's no more dialogue. Okay, um, I would like to take a motion if there's any. We're good before I take the next motion? All right, I'd like to take a motion to move into um. Our regular executive session. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, I'd like to thank everybody in the audience and our cabinet to have a great evening. And I appreciate everybody's hard work every week, every day, twenty-four seven. And um to our community members, have a wonderful night. And um, we will be moving into executive and for my colleagues on the board, we will be using the um. The same link that was sent out um to you earlier.